I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, March the 4th, 2013. I want to welcome everyone. Steve Kimmel, Dr. Steve Kimmel from the First Baptist Church is here and he's going to give our invocation, lead us in the place of the flag. So would everyone please...
Our Father, we are so grateful to be able to live in this community. Thank you for this good privilege. We have clean water to drink and warm homes to live in, good food to eat. And even more than these, we are people who enjoy freedom, and we thank you for that. We pray that you will bless our community and each of us as we play a part in it. I thank you for these who serve us and pray that you will bless their deliberations and help them to serve us well, and we're grateful for them. Now, we pray that you will bless all that happens in this place tonight to the end that our community would be strengthened. Help us to raise our families in ways that are pleasing in your sight. We thank you for it. And pray this tonight in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to cut my cellphone off. Thank you, Steve, and for those folks, this is without a doubt First Baptist Church is the best First Baptist church in our community. And if you're looking for a new church or, you know, want to change, I know Steve and them would love to have you. So, thank you so much. They are great neighbors. Item two is agenda changes, and we do have one item that we need to add to the consent agenda. And I'm going to ask that Mr. Wade Lenica make a motion to suspend the rules in order to add that item to the consent agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. On the consent agenda, item 8D, approval of street closings, I want to add to the list that will be voted on tonight, the Memorial Day event that the city will have on Monday, May 27th. For that event, we will close King Street from Bank Street through the Village Green, Powder Springs Street from the Village Green to Atlanta Road, and Bank Street from King Street, King Street, the intersection with King Street, west to the driveway behind City Hall that's called Village Walk. Basically, the area right around Veterans Memorial Park. We'll need to add those closures to our list. I move that in the form of a motion.
Well, before you do that, Wade, we need to...
Okay. Let me move to suspend the rules for the purpose of adding that to the list.
Yep. Motion second to suspend the rules to add an item to the agenda. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. We don't know how we're going to do this. This is a new system.
Here, I think you've got, there you go.
That's approved 6-0. Now, Wade, if you'll make your motion.
I moved to add to the lists of approved street closings for 2013 city events and concerts, item 8D on the consent agenda, the list of street locations that I previously iterated.
Motion second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. All right, that's approved 6-0. That will be added to the consent agenda as part of the item D.
Thank you.
And just for the record, Susan Wilkinson is not here. She is out of town, and Eric Taylor is also out of town. We have Tammy Sadler Jones here. So, thank you, Tammy, for being here. Item A is under Mayor's Merrill Report. A is a proclamation in recognition of Red Cross Month, March 2013. Is somebody here from the Red Cross? Oh, you want to step forward, and I'm going to ask that Councilman Ron Fennell read that proclamation and present it, and go from there.
Ms. Anderson, thank you for being here. Here's a proclamation by the mayor of the city of Smyrna in recognition of Red Cross Month, March 2013. Whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to recognize and thank our heroes, those who volunteer, donate blood, take life-saving courses, or provide financial donations to support an organization whose mission is to help those in need, and whereas we would like to remember those who help all of us here in Smyrna by giving their time and helping their neighbor, and thank our heroes, our volunteers, blood donors, class takers, and financial supporters who help assist those in need. And whereas in Smyrna, the Metropolitan Atlanta chapter of the American Red Cross, which covers 13 counties, including Cobb County, works tirelessly with the help of 2,700 volunteers to help when disasters strike, when someone needs life-saving blood, or the comfort of a helping hand. It provides 24-hour support to members of the military, veterans, and their families, and provides training in CPR, aquatics, safety, and first aid. And whereas across the country, the American Red Cross responds to nearly 70,000 disasters a year. Of those, 646 disasters happen right here in metro Atlanta. It provides some 400,000 services to military members, veterans, and civilians, collects and distributes about 40% of the nation's blood supply, and trains more than 7 million people in first aid, water safety, and other life-saving skills every year. And whereas, our community depends upon the American Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission. Despite these challenging economic times, the American Red Cross continues to offer help and comfort for those in need. Now, therefore, I, A. Max Bacon, Mayor of the city of Smyrna, Georgia, by virtue of the authority vested in me in the Constitution and the laws of Smyrna and Georgia, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2013 as American Red Cross Month. I encourage all Americans to support this organization and its notable humanitarian mission. Signed on this fourth day of March 2013, A. Max Bacon, Mayor. And I'd like to present.
If you'd like to say something, we need that folder back, too.
As a citizen of Smyrna, I appreciate your conscientious use of resources.
Thank you so much. I was just kidding, though. You can have that.
I appreciate that, but I'm not kidding about being a citizen of Smyrna. So, thank you so much for serving the community.
You look like one of us.
And I wanted to thank this council for also supporting the Red Cross because, as Mr. Fennell pointed out, and also as the Reverend pointed out, we are neighbors helping neighbors, and we are all thankful for the houses that we have and the food that we eat and the safety that we enjoy from our community. And that's what the Red Cross is able to do with the support of this committee and the support of our community, is that no matter what happens, we are there, and we are only there because of the generosity of the people that make up the Red Cross. Most people don't realize that we are an almost entirely volunteer-delivered mission. And the Atlanta chapter of the Red Cross is proud to say that we are one of the largest, actually the largest, metro Red Cross that is 100% volunteer response. So, for every house fire that happens in Cobb County, for every family that has a Red Cross person putting a blanket around their shoulders and putting, finding them security for the evening, that's a volunteer. And we get these volunteers from the great people of Cobb County. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. We know y'all been busy. It's been a busy last six months for y'all.
It has been the busiest disaster response year since 2005.
And Penny, thank you for being a resident of Smyrna.
Thank you.
Item four is land issues, zonings, and annexation. We do not have any issues at all. Item five is previous license. We have nothing there. Item six is formal business. A is approval of appointment of the city clerk, Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones. Will you give us the background on that, please?
Sure. Our new city clerk is Ms. Terry Graham, and I'd ask that she stand so she could be recognized, so the citizens of Smyrna can see her today. Ms. Graham comes to us with previous experience as a city clerk from the city of Hiram, and we are so glad to have her aboard as a city of Smyrna team member.
And Ms. Tara Nolowicz, who is chairman of the Finance Administration, also headed up the committee for the search for the city clerk. I'll turn this over to her, Terry.
Thank you. Yes, I'd like to invite Terry up if she'd like to, to come just introduce herself. This was a, I'm trying to actually pull up my notes from the process so I can give you some exact dates, but the committee was myself and Melanie Pritchett, Wade Lenica. Kay Bolick is the Director of Human Resources, and we met several times. We received a lot of very well-qualified resumes, but Terry was the highest qualified resume that we received. We interviewed several candidates and interviewed several wonderful candidates, but, you know, through the process and through our discussions, we really felt like Terry was going to be a strong fit for our organization. She has impeccable professional skills. She has the skill set that we have, you know, would really set as our ideal in terms of being a certified city clerk. She's working towards her Master Clerk certification. And if you'd like to introduce yourself to those in the audience and at home, this is your chance.
My name is Terry Graham, and I'm certainly very honored and humbled to be here tonight to accept, I'm sorry. Look closer. Okay. Can you hear me now? My name is Terry Graham, and I'm very honored and humbled to be here tonight.
I think you got this little soft little voice. It was how close you get that microphone.
Can you hear me now? But I come with lots of, I didn't know I was going to speak, so I don't have anything prepared, but I come with a lot of professional experience, and I'm hoping to be a great asset to the city of Smyrna.
We apologize for not letting you know.
That's okay.
Thank you, though.
And you'll be giving your first report at the next meeting.
Okay.
In two weeks.
Okay.
You get a motion?
At this time, I would like to move to approve the appointment of Terry Graham as the city clerk for the city of Smyrna.
Motion second. Any discussion?
This is effective tomorrow, March 5th?
Yes, it is, effective tomorrow, March 5th of 2013.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved 6-0. And the next item on the agenda is swearing in of the city clerk, and our city judge is here, Judge Alton Curtis. What a great place to spend your birthday.
Happy birthday, Judge.
I will ask Terry to come up. I'm going to do that. I know all these people are here not to be here for the council meeting. If you want to have your family come up here, and we're going to do it up here at the podium, so, family or friends or whoever, don't be afraid, unless you're on some kind of list. Okay. All right. Have a lauter now. Terry, if you'd raise your right hand, place your left hand on the Bible and repeat after me. I, Terry Graham...
I, Terry Graham.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will well and truly...
I will well and truly...
Conduct myself as city clerk...
Conduct myself as city clerk...
Of the city of Smyrna...
Of the city of Smyrna...
For the ensuing term...
For the ensuing term...
That I will faithfully enforce...
That I will faithfully enforce...
The charter and ordinances...
The charter and ordinances...
Of the city of Smyrna...
Of the city of Smyrna...
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
Without fear or favor...
Without fear or favor...
That I am not the holder...
That I am not the holder...
Of any unaccounted public money...
That I am of any public or accounted money...
Unaccounted.
Unaccounted money.
Do the state...
Do the state...
Or any political subdivision...
Or any political subdivision...
Or authority thereof...
Or the authority thereof...
And in all my actions...
And in all my actions...
As city clerk...
As city clerk...
Act as I believe...
Act as I believe...
For the best interest...
For the best interest...
Of the city of Smyrna...
Of the city of Smyrna...
So help me God...
So help me God.
If you'll sign your name, Terry Graham, city clerk, for signature.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Look, the mic. Can you introduce the invited guests?
Well, my husband, Lee Graham, is here, my son, Sean, my very good friend, who is the city clerk for the city of Dallas, Sarah Ruff. And her husband is here also, who was a firefighter for the city of Smyrna. And Grady...
Oh, good Grady.
Grady Ruff.
I graduated high school.
And my daughter Andrea in the gray, and her husband Dan. My daughter Lauren is right behind Andrea in the red coat. My sister-in-law, Trini Cole. My brother-in-law, Keith Graham. And my sister-in-law, Erlene Graham, who is also a council member for the city of Hiram. And who did I miss?
Travis.
And Travis is my daughter Lauren's boyfriend.
Don't worry about me.
But thank you so much for this opportunity and this honor. I hope that I can serve the city to the best of my ability.
Give him that mic. Thank you. Y'all are done. Oh, Scott Cocke. Scott. Yep. I think that sort of completes, we had three very important positions to fill, our police chief, a librarian, the city clerk, and I think we've done well. So, we look forward to a long relationship with Terry and her expertise. We'll move on down to the agenda. Item C is approval to rename Talleson Park Softball Field B in honor of Judge Ken Nix. I'll get Tammy to give the background. Steve's here, isn't he?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The late Judge Ken Nix started an adult softball program in Marietta in 1998. Two senior softball teams were introduced to Smyrna Recreation in 1991. And with Judge Nix's guidance and administration, the division grew to 12 teams by the time of his passing in 2012. And at this time, I'm going to yield to council member Ron Fennell, who will give you a little bit more information about Judge Nix.
Mr. Fennell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ken Nix was a force of nature, those of you who had the privilege of knowing him. He lived 73 years, but it was like he lived 150. He had a lot going on, and he did an awful lot for our community from, I guess, Westside High School until they migrated out here to Smyrna. We're very fortunate to have had he and Charlene for 50 years of wedded bliss in the community, and she was a very tolerant person to have as much fun with a fellow like Ken Nix. He made a lot of people in the community aware of an awful lot of things for sport, and he loved sports. He loved getting young people involved in it, and as they grew older, he wanted them to stay involved, and so all of us had a chance. Ken Nix was a retired Cobb County Superior Court judge, but it started much earlier than that. He ended up, 10 years he served in the House after he had received his degree from Emory University in 1964. So, 1972, he was elected to the State House. He served 10 years there. He entered the State Court in 1985, where he served a decade in that role until 95, when he went on the Superior Court, where he served until his retirement in 2010. The last couple of years of his life, he battled pancreatic cancer. His daughters, Kim and KK's sons, Ken Junior, Keith, Kevin, and their 13 grandchildren still represent Ken Nix in our community and across the southeast where they're all strewn these days. But Ken Nix is an important part of our community's legacy of getting young people involved in our recreation programs. We're very proud today to be able to rename Talleson Park Softball Field B in his honor. And just as a personal aside, since he was a constituent of mine, even before that, when I had the privilege, before I even moved to Smyrna, my wife worked at the Chamber of Commerce, and every year he held a softball game between the government gorillas and the Chamber Chargers. And there was a trophy awarded each year for the most valuable player, and then barbecue was consumed afterwards. I had the privilege, one year, of being recruited by Judge Nix as then a former, he and I served in the State House, so as a former elected official, he let me play on the government gorillas team. I won the trophy as MVP that year. It was the proudest moment in my association with Ken Nix. I almost brought it tonight, but I didn't. But paying tribute to Ken Nix is the least we can do in this way, and then, once the season gets underway, I think we ought to do something a little bit more appropriate and fitting while everybody's at the field. But tonight, happy to make a motion to approve the renaming of Talleson Park Softball B, Field B, in honor of Judge Ken Nix.
Motion second. Is there any discussion? I just want to just say just one quick thing. Ken did a lot for not only sports, but for a lot of people, a lot of young kids were, had their lives changed, I think, maybe because Ken was able to work with them. And he was a low-profile, behind-the-scenes, didn't make a lot of noise. But he was, I think he was a great judge. He was a great person. He was all about Smyrna, and I think this is a great idea to name the field after him. And we are having a, we're going to dedicate the field. I'm not sure of the date. Steve might want to mention. We're going to have his family there. I think we'll have hot dogs or something for the Cobb County softball. But he got a lot of people in the senior league that really, I think, have extended their life because they've become more active than they were, and, but just a great guy. Mr. Lenica, I thought you were going to make a comment.
No, sir. I agree with everything you said.
Okay, good. Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion. That's approved 6-0. Right, didn't take but a second, did it? Thank y'all very much. Item D is bid award RFP 13-017 to Green Rock Partners for Parks and Recreation Master Plan for 2013 through 2023 in the amount of $29,000, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all documents. Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones, the background, please.
Yes, staff is recommending Green Rock Partners in the amount of $29,000. They demonstrated an excellent understanding of the project's scope, met all qualifications, and demonstrated previous experience in development of park and recreation master plans. The Director of Parks and Recreation, Steve Ciaccio, is here to give more information about this particular bid recommendation.
Thank you, Tammy. Regarding the scope of this project, it is the next phase of what we do every 10 years, and that is a 10-year Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So, what will the document do? It will recommend and prioritize the city's parks and recreation needs through 2023. Those needs include, just like it did back in 2003 when we did it last, park land acquisition, facility improvements, new development, programs, and service delivery. The document should also include the cost of the plan, economic development, and quality of life benefits of the plan. It'll prioritize existing maintenance and safety concerns as we know them, determine best practice for service offerings for citizens, so folks who are in classes and programs will find out what their needs are, and will identify that and make changes as necessary, develop an implementation and funding schedule. And some of the needs assessment portion of that document will include the public. There'll be an interactive survey on the city's website for a month, and we'll have a couple of public input meetings. I'm not sure just where yet, but we'll get that word out in street signage, I'm sure, as well as sign as on marquees and up on the city's website. So, Green Rock's a good firm. I know they'll do a good job, and we will certainly let the public know when we need their input because we care about what they think. By the way, Wednesday, April 3rd, is the date for the function at Talleson Park. Right now, we're thinking 6:00 or 6:30, but it'll be Wednesday, April 3rd, at Talleson. That is on the McCauley side of that park.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask that Corky Welch, since Ms. Wilkinson is not here, to take care of that issue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, thank you for that report. Parks are something I think we should all be proud of in Smyrna. We worked during the, our predecessors up here, and some of these people on the council worked very hard over the last years to put together a good park system, and it's something that we should be proud of and continue to utilize as much as we can. With that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recommend the award of RFP 13-017 to Green Park Partners for Parks and Recreation Master Plan for the 2013 to 2023 Master Plan in the amount of $29,000, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all documents.
Motion second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? That's approved. Somebody hasn't voted. Approved 6-0. All right, item 6E is a public hearing approval of ordinance 2013-04, amending the alcoholic beverage ordinance to allow growler stores to sell tastings for marketing purposes, city of Smyrna. Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones, the background.
Yes, Mayor, this particular item will allow an individual, when they go into a growler store, to do samplings before they purchase a bottle of a growler. And actually, Ken Sudrith, the Director of Community Development, is here to give more information about this particular ordinance amendment.
Mr. Ken Sudrith.
I do have just a quick PowerPoint. Well, they have moved it on me, Mayor. Anyway, the ordinance itself adds a few words so that it matches our wine specialty shops. When we drafted the wine stuff several years ago, it was exclusively designed for wine. Since that time, the popularity of malt beverage in the growler format, sort of a jug kind of format, has come to the metro area, and we allowed that with an amendment last year. They have come back and said that it would be desirable to allow sampling of that as well, like you would a wine. So, this is the amendment to allow that. There is a limit of no more than five 2-ounce samples that you can have. The growler store that is in the Market Village, I believe, has over 40 taps, so obviously, it's not there to test every single one of them. But this amendment, as we've discussed in our work sessions and that you have in front of you, will allow that to occur. Staff recommends approval of that. We've had several discussions in the past about it, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Sorry about the electronics.
Ken, would you tell everybody in the viewing audience what a growler actually is? Because I didn't know the first time I heard it.
It is, it really is beer. I mean, it's basically a way to buy beer. I mean, it's basically a way to buy beer. And it is in a container that I believe is either 32 or 64 ounces. So it's not your normal style. It is a container that you can bring, you purchase once, and you can bring back and refill again. But it is rather expensive because you're buying a great volume. But it is used for craft beers. You know, we're not talking about what we would normally buy in a liquor store, the supermarket kind of stuff. These are craft beers. And most of the time, they're going to be of the general area where they're made here. Not always. They also change those beers out on a frequent basis so that there's always something new to try. So it is sort of a niche market for beer drinkers, to be honest with you.
Any other questions, Mr. Fennel?
Mr. Sudrith, isn't it also true that these establishments are required to follow all of the laws relative to alcohol service in terms of staff being licensed, permitted, educated, and also helping to coach and educate the visiting public to protect public safety as they leave the store?
Absolutely. And they are also required to obtain those alcohol licenses and pay the necessary fees. There's actually two licenses involved with this. They have to have their package license, and then they have to have the specialty license as well for that.
Any other questions to Ken? Thank you, Ken. This is a public hearing. Is anyone here that would like to make any public comment, any to for or against this approval of this ordinance? Let the record show that there is none. I'll ask that Ms. Andrea Bluestein to...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would like to make a motion to approve ordinance 2013-04, amending the alcoholic beverage ordinance to allow growler stores to sell tastings for marketing purposes in the city of Smyrna.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved 6C. Thank you very much. Item 7 is commercial building permits. We have none. Item 8 is consent agenda. Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
Yes, the consent agenda is as follows. Item A, approval of February 18, 2013, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, bid award RFQ 13-018, Campbell Road Drainage Improvement Award to the lowest bidder, Corley Contractors, for the amount of $45,175.35, and authorize the mayor to execute any related documents. Item C, approval to grant a drainage easement on city-owned property at 1105 Concord Road to the property owner of 1115 Concord Road, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Item D, approval of street closings for 2013 city events and concerts. Item E, approval to use council chambers on March 7, 2013, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. for a Williams Park neighborhood meeting with Brett Ward, principal of the New Smyrna Elementary School. Item F, approval to use council chambers for Oak Ridge Estates HOA meeting, March 12, 2013, 6:30 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. And item G, approval to use council chambers for Vinings Forest HOA meeting, March 14, 2013, 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Do you hear a motion that we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
That motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. This approves 6C. Thank you very much. Item 9 is committee reports. We'll start tonight with Ms. Melanie Pritchett. Ms. Pritchett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since I'm having a problem with my voice, I will yield to Ms. Bluestein.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
I don't have a committee report this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Taryn Nullwitz. Ms. Taryn Nullwitz.
It's a quiet week, Ms. Graham. I don't recommend you come in next to our next council meeting, assuming that they're all like this. But I'm very pleased that we have brought in a city clerk. I think Ms. Graham, again, is going to do a wonderful job. We started the process with the committee meeting on January 18, and I think that, you know, again, I just want to thank all of the members of the committee who gave so much of their time, in addition to the time that they already give to the city, because it was a very, a professional and an enjoyable and a collegial process. And so I wanted to thank the members, again, of the committee, Melanie Pritchett, Wade Lenica, Kay Bolick, and then also Tammy Sadler Jones and Rochelle, Rachel, Rochelle, from Ballard, thank you, from HR for coming in. City Administrator Eric Taylor came in for some of the end interviews. And everyone who, you know, who applied, internal and external, it was a very good process, and I think we have a wonderful outcome. So with that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Mr. Mayor, I have no reports this evening. Thank you.
Mr. Wade Lenica.
Thank you, Your Honor. I too want to wish Ms. Graham welcome to the city and look forward to her endeavors in helping us get going and serving the citizens of the city as best as we all can. Also, just want to note that on the consent agenda tonight, we're two HOA meetings that I'll be hosting here in City Hall next week, on Tuesday night for Oak Ridge Estates, Thursday night next week for Vinings Forest. Look forward to seeing those residents and answering their questions and, again, serving them as best I can. And finally, it's just nice to see firefighter-retiree Grady Ruff. Good evening, sir, and hope you're doing well. You look good. Thank you. I yield.
Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From the public safety side, I want to note that the Fire Medic Number 5 went online last week. That adds the final compliment to those Ford Explorer conversion vehicles that saves money and saves lives in our community. We're very proud of that. It's now domiciled at Fire Station Number 5. Now each station has available to them a rolling vehicle that can help save lives quickly in our community, and we're grateful for that. Our Smyrna Police Chief has been on the job less than 30 days, and I continue to get great reports. You should be proud of your Smyrna Police Department, what it does every day. They're solving cases, they're protecting your families and your homes and your businesses. And I try to thank them every day. I hope you will join me in doing so and thank them for what they're doing. But I couldn't be prouder of David Lee for what he's doing for us. I did have the privilege, at the mayor's request, to attend an event which honored one of our firefighters. The program, in its fourth year now, is called Hearts for Heroes at the Earl Smith Strand Theater in Marietta. Every municipality had the privilege of nominating someone who had served in our active military and now serves as a member of the city staff in each of these communities. Thomas Bates, who is a firefighter here, served tours overseas in Afghanistan enduring freedom and other combatant battles. He exemplifies what military to local government service is all about, Mr. Mayor. I thank you for allowing me to be a part of that. It was a great program. It is something that we need to do more of every day. Thank those people who have served in our active military, who are now the heroes that walk among us and serve at the local government level. And then finally, Mr. Mayor, I did want to point out that one of Smyrna's great small business owners and operators, Kenny Burts, please just continue to remember him in your prayers with challenges that he faces. His business has been so successful and put Smyrna on the map, and we continue to hope and pray for his speedy recovery. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Tammy Sadler Jones, anything you want to bring up? Ms. Scott Cochran. Ms. Samantha. Okay. Item 10 is show cause hearing. We do not have anything. Item 11 is citizens' input. We have two folks signed up, Alec Bakri, 3459 Charlie Trail. Topic is comments.
My comments tonight exclude the four new council people that were not in office at the time and on what I want to speak on. I'd like to, again, bring up Hickory Lakes. The bond, again, was $15,950,000. Now, there's one thing that bothers me on this, and that lists the $2 million capital interest. Well, I've found out there's a breakdown on this $2 million that's misleading. February 1 of this year, the city had to pay $475,000 towards that bond. This August 1, it's another $478,000 due. February 1 of '14, $898,000 is due, and that pretty much covers that $2 million. But it continues. August 1 of '14, an additional $473,000 is due on this interest. If Hickory Lakes sits for another year and a half, up to three or four years, the interest on this could go up around $18,000, $19,000, just to break even. And I want to remind this council that the people that lived at Hickory Lakes, the management there, also managed Cumberland Run and Keeland Farms in Smyrna. Many people moved to those two places additionally to the Smyrna Commons, while the city still owned that. So you're just dispersing it. Again, I don't know why the city, in the first place, when they knew it was a problem, annexed it, should have stayed in Cobb, whether it's on the borderline or what have you. When we put out, you put out $15 million, $16 million, this warrants a town hall meeting or a referendum. We had neither on the Hickory Lakes, and I find that appalling. This is our money. When we have questions that don't make sense, not only should we be able to ask them, we should be able to get answers to them, and we have not. And the Smyrna Commons, you'd think the city would have learned from that, losing over $3 million. When you have entries like attorney fees, I mean, financial advisor, $165,000 for that, I wish someone called me, I'd have said no and saved the money, $165,000. We had no town hall meeting or referendum on that. I hate to think the people in the city are paying for losses that we had no say in. These are millions of dollars of our money that someone's going to be held accountable for, and we have no accountability or transparency when we have figures like this and investments that we don't know anything about. I want to stress the oath in the best interest of Smyrna. The best interest in Smyrna is not losing millions of dollars on these real estate situations. And to go back to the Hickory Lakes...
Ms. Mayor. Since the American Legion had 20 minutes during a citizens' meeting here... Your time's up. We'll get the next speaker. Mayor Kirklandold.
The Legion had 20 minutes in citizens' input about two months ago.
You know what the rules are, Mr. Bakri? You come up here every meeting, so just have a seat, your time's up. Thank you.
Why does the American Legion get 20 minutes and we can't? It's a double standard here.
Ms. Mayor Kirklandold is the next speaker.
Well, I can understand why you bank that you and the city attorney went under for millions, bad investments.
God, it's such a shame what's going on in this city. It's just such a disconnect. You come up to this City Hall building, this monstrosity, that was paid for by all our tax money, and then you go a few blocks over into my neighborhood, Smyrna Heights, and it looks like a slum. It's being ignored, it's being run down to the ground. And Mayor Bacon, do you ever come through Smyrna Heights and see what's going on a few blocks from here? Due to the Concord, well, due to a lot of things, but it's not helping that Concord Road has just been raped clean of any businesses, and it's just sitting there. Of course, nobody's going to come in and buy our houses. That's the difference in Brookhaven. You know, there are neighborhoods, just like Smyrna Heights over in Brookhaven, that are nurtured and loved and taken care of, and those are where people live, and they want to buy those houses. What's happening in Smyrna Heights is, I'm sure it's your intention, Mayor Bacon, to just devalue it to the point where one of your buddies will come in and raise everything and build some of these big mega mansions, which does not make for, I don't know, it's my neighborhood, and I can't sell my house. I get to come up here for three minutes and talk to people who look like there's nothing behind their eyes. You guys have no response, you have no concern for your old neighborhoods. Your neighborhoods, along Spring Road, just because you put a road out front and a median and some landscaping, you think that everything's fine. You think people don't see what's really behind in those neighborhoods? They're just ignored and run down. Why do you think we're getting a Krispy Kreme and a Del Taco on one of the highest, it should be one of the highest dollar pieces of real estate in Smyrna? It's a joke. You're down there in, you're connected to Vinings, so you don't count, Mr. Fennel. Your people are really not part of Smyrna. They're part of the Vinings area down there. But I really wasn't going to talk about Smyrna Heights, although I have to look at it every day, and I can't believe Jennifer Bennett allows her street. I live two doors down from her, and our street is cracked. Weeds are growing up through our street, and nobody cares. It's just amazing. But I really came here tonight to talk about image that was voted down in Cobb County, and I just wanted to make a little comment about it, since I opted to turn my flag upside down and fly my flag upside down. Not just because of that, but that was the same day Obama decided to open up our jails and let illegals run free. As far as what I understand, is 2,000 have been let out so far, and 3,000 more are going to be let out. But there was a fake ID ring uncovered in Smyrna two weeks ago, making IDs, and that's connected to all the money and $69 million that went down to South America from our country in 2010. It's all connected, and as far as I'm concerned, any city, county, and federal government is part of the criminal enterprise, shipping our money out of our country and taking jobs away from Americans.
Your time's up. Thank you. Now, I just give y'all enough time to go back to Hare for tomorrow. Any other bids to be brought before this body? This meeting is adjourned at, looks about 8:19. Thank you very much.